Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revelinsky.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Thank you. Any changes to this evening's agenda, counsel? Now, we'll move to our consent agenda. With approval of the minutes from the July 11th meeting. We have acceptance of the library board minutes. Approval of payroll in the amount of $94,724.86. Approval of the June finance report. We have a resolution for employment of a new utility billing clerk, Dawn Travis. Approval of a liquor license for Amora Mio. And approval of claims in the amount of $214,093.64. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not an entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revelinsky.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For our public appearances, Art Walk is requesting a street closure. And I think, Mike, you're going to represent them tonight for us.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. We were approached by Art Walk to close Hempstead from Maine to Court, basically so they could have a motorcycle, sort of a motorcycle wheelie-type exhibit. Rustin, Lippincott, and those three individuals were willing to come down and sort of put on this 45-minute or so show. And there's Adam, so he could jump in and sort of talk about it at greater depth.
Art Walk, Art Walk, Adam?
So we talked about a couple different proposals. The first idea was in front of the movie theater, kind of that square block area. Well, not the square block, which is the immediate vicinity. We thought maybe with pedestrians, it might be easier to run it right in front of the convention center. We have a more green space off to the side of the courthouse. So, from Rustin, these are his friends here that have been doing this. He's seen it before. It's mostly wheelies and fairly low-speed sort of tricks, jumping on the handlebars, stuff like that. I haven't seen it personally, so I can't tell you exactly, but they've offered to waive all of their liability. So the only prospective challenge would be the liability on the city side of somebody going over a curb and hitting a pedestrian or something like that. And that seems to be a very unlikely chance that that would occur, but that's probably what needs to be flushed out from the city side. And maybe I missed some of that conversation.
We were just talking about where. So is it Hempstead between Maine and Court?
So the proposed area would be Hempstead.
And why was that chosen? Do you think there's enough room on both sides to, for people to?
Yeah, more pedestrian space off to the side.
Okay, great.
Would it be in our best interest to put up barricades to keep people behind a certain point?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
They're going to block out parking on that whole block?
Yeah, there would need to be no parking during that time. You know, we could be flexible on the time, so you could open it up parking after the event.
Well, I'm just wondering how early you're going to have to shut up, you know, put up the barricades to make sure there's no cars there when you have your van.
Yeah, there's a lot of courthouse parking and then the county attorney's office in that. If it's on Hempstead. Now, if it was on Grimes on the south side of Howard Park, that might be a little different. There isn't as much parking that you'd be taking up and, you know, but...
What time is it going to be?
Lot more room.
They're flexible both on location and time.
Block further away.
Yeah, block further more.
Yeah, I'd say 6:30, 7:00. Usually things are set up.
So we block it up at 6:00 or 6:30? That should be...
You could probably block it up at 5:00. Most people are out of the courthouse by 4:30, typically on a Friday.
It's a one-way street, so you block off the west side and then let the traffic leave. But Grimes is actually a two-way street, and it's much more well-traveled. I live right there, so I think closing Grimes would be more problematic for people getting around town, but Hempstead's the right way to go.
So they're flexible on time, they're flexible on the location. I think it's just what works best for the city.
Okay, well, the proposal is for Hempstead, so we'll go with that. And the motion then to approve from Katie would be to approve based on, or at least the suggestion, and if you want to make it a motion, to approve it based on barricades being placed, closing the street in a timely manner. Were you also referring to barricades on the sides as well?
I was referring to barricades to keep people back a certain distance.
Keep people back off, so on the sidewalks.
Are there sidewalks?
Rope it off or something, and rope it off.
We've got cones in the Art Walk building. We could put ropes along those cones and probably barricade that off. That way, limit the city's responsibility in that.
Second.
Okay, so, you okay with that? Motion by Anderson, second by Revelinsky. Any other discussion or concerns?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Yeah, I was thinking about the Shriners during the Kid's Day Parade. Sometimes you're standing right there on the road, you're like...
Right next to them.
And somehow it always works out, so we'll probably be okay with the motorcycles. It's all on Rustin. I know he's not here tonight, but we'll blame him. Counsel, we'll move to our resolution and action items, and one ordinance reading. First is, we have a proposal for a natural gas transportation contract, and we have Athena Simpson here this evening. Good evening, Athena. You can walk us through what the proposal is, and I know Ways and Means has reviewed this, if they have any comments as well.
All right. So, number one, I appreciate you guys having me. And I'm not sure what background any of you have outside of the Ways and Means, but Wood River Energy is a third-party natural gas supplier. So what that means is we go out and we purchase your natural gas needs on the market and then work directly with Alliant to move the gas through the existing equipment on your buildings. It is a utility-sponsored program. Transportation's been available here in Iowa about 15 years, actually started with the school districts as a way for them to control their budget and have input on that spending. Wood River works with customers all across the board. Small and medium-volume customers tend to be the bulk of our business in that we can provide a guaranteed savings option. And I believe that's what we've talked about and what's been presented. So just to kind of run through, I put a little packet together for each of you to kind of summarize quickly. Wood River currently operates in Iowa, Nebraska, Kansas, South Dakota, Wyoming, and Colorado. Here in Iowa, Wood River's been operating since 2014. We were started in 2013. All of our partners have been in the industry over 20 years. We do have several municipalities that we work with, as well as public and private school districts, hotels, restaurants, assisted living. We have several customers here in town as well. We are fully approved through the Iowa Utility Board. As I mentioned, it is a utility-sponsored program. And the third page in that packet shows the section from the Alliant tariff, which is their rulebook. They're black and white, "We Will, We Won't," that talks about small-volume transportation, which is what we are proposing, the program. What that means, like I said, is we go out and we purchase your gas needs, and then Alliant moves it through the existing equipment. They allow us to do this because they are revenue-neutral on the commodity of natural gas. They don't make any money on the gas itself. They make the money moving the gas. So in turn, they still consider you a customer, they still read your meter every month and send us the information. You're still eligible for rebates and incentives should you install new equipment in any of these buildings. We did review lots of meters, and there were two that qualified. And by "qualified" just mean that they had a high enough usage that I could provide cost savings. So you have to hit a certain threshold for it to make sense. Any questions so far?
What are the buildings?
The addresses were the, whoop, I don't have the address. I have the meter and the account number. I believe it was the...
The rec center in the water.
Yes, yes. Yep. And so if you look at, there's a natural gas map included in there, and I'll just kind of run you briefly through how we're able to provide that savings. It is the same gas you're currently getting, drilled, fracked, processed, exactly the same way. It's purchased through the same market, and then passed through the interstate pipeline system in exactly the same way, and delivered to your building through the existing equipment. Where we differ is the middle piece between the processing plant and the city gate, the interstate pipeline. Alliant, 90% of their customers are residential, so that's who they have to plan for. The residential customer is very inefficient and very unpredictable. Think cold day in January, what happens at home? Your thermostat goes up. Commercial and industrial customers, for the most part, cold days are business as usual. Thermostats remain the same, restaurants are still cooking, production is still happening, so you're easier to plan for. So across that interstate pipeline, Alliant has to plan for peak-day capacity for those residential customers. So they have to plan in July for that one cold day in January when all those residential customers crank their thermostats. Here in Iowa, financially, it doesn't make sense for us to work with residential customers because it gets too cold. So we've removed the highest of highs and lowest of lows across that pipeline in the capacity, in turn removing some of those costs. Alliant also buys and stores gas. It's very costly to put gas in the ground, transport it in, transport it out, all of those things. And then you also run into a market like we saw over the winter where in January we saw 17-year lows in the natural gas market. So they bought all this natural gas last year in the summer, put it in storage, paid to store it, and then the market fell out. So, and kind of like your personal portfolio, over time, you just can't beat the market. So, like I said, we work with customers of all types across diversified types of programs, and where we're able to offer the guaranteed savings. It's a nice introduction to natural gas transport because it doesn't cost you anything to come on the program. We don't have to install any equipment. We don't have to change anything. It's a paperwork change with us and Alliant. The only thing that changes on your end is who your invoice comes from. All of the Alliant charges are a direct pass-through. They're actually discounted, and then pass-through from Wood River Energy. There is a backend Alliant fee that Wood River absorbs, and I'll actually show that to Mike when we do a first invoice review. We absorb that just as an investment into the relationship and a cost of doing business. So it's really, it's an easy way to put money back in your budget without making changes to light bulbs, thermostats, boilers, anything like that. And it's one of those things that most people just don't know is an option. So, there it is in the nutshell. Any questions?
So is it one, is it one constant fee on a monthly basis?
So currently, your commodity cost from Alliant adjusts each month, and I don't know if you're aware of that, but if you look, they post those costs each month, the first of the month. So the guaranteed savings applies to the commodity cost, the meter fee, and the delivery fees. The only changing fee on that is the commodity cost, and that is approved through the Iowa Utility Board each month. Those delivery fees remain consistent. Those are also approved and would require a rate case change for every Alliant customer.
Are you purchasing gas?
Yes, we purchase the natural gas.
So you're doing, okay. So you're doing your own risk management?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So that's also where the consistency that you can give us is coming from?
Yes, correct. Yep. And we are fully backed by Shell North America, which you can see in the terms and conditions of the contract. That adds a little bit of weight. Like I said, we work with lots of public schools, several other municipalities are flowing. We have multiple others that have been approved and others that are under review as well. Here in town, we have several customers as well.
Have you run an estimated cost savings on either one of the meters?
Yes, and I believe that should be included. The last two pages show you a two-year usage breakdown and cost breakdown. That information came directly from Alliant. And so you'll see the meter number on the far left, the month is the next column, and then the usage is listed in therms and the dollar amount billed. On the far right, the 3,300 decathermes or 33,000 thermes is approximately what was used on the one meter, 950 decathermes on the other, and then the costs, rounded estimate, obviously based on what's there, and then on the guaranteed savings. So between the two meters, the guaranteed savings, based on last year's usages and costs from the utility, would have been $1,300.
Per month?
Per year, for a calendar year, for a 12-month period. So, not a ton of money, but enough that it can make a difference. It's an easy way to save some money. A couple of the other things that we came across as we were doing this, there was one particular meter that had no usage in two years, so that's something that can be reviewed as well. You know, that's $200 plus annually that's being spent on a meter that had no gas through it in two years, so.
From a Ways and Means standpoint, and we talked about this again, we realize it's not a lot of savings, it's $1,300.
Something.
And we have no risk with anything else, so our recommendation was to accept it again because there's no risk, and it's $1,300. You know, we're trying to stress to all the other departments about the waste of saved money, and here it's being handed to us.
Is there a duration on the agreement?
We did put it together for a one-year term, so that would allow us to build a relationship, show you that we can provide the savings that we say we can provide. There is a 60-day written notice at the end of the term. We would reevaluate and determine if it's something you choose to move forward with or if it's, you want to look at other options as well. We do have other pricing programs, but we felt this was the best approach from a municipal standpoint because there's no risk being put back on the city.
It was the most conservative.
Yes, correct.
We had some others that we could, again, think of. We could start taking more of the risks, but...
Yeah, the other option is...
There's greater risk, but there's also, there could be greater rewards.
Yes.
It wasn't locked in in the market.
It was market contingent, which we felt...
Well, and in all reality, with where the market is right now, a fixed price, the market's been kind of all over the board the last few months, about a dollar 10 higher than it was in January. So a fixed price is not a great option at this point. And on this, you know you're going to save every month over what you've currently been paying, you know, through Alliant.
Okay. So we have a recommendation from Ways and Means to approve this contract, Tom?
Yes, we do. Could make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Thompson, second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Revelinsky.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Next, counsel, we had a very successful 4th of July display and wonderful celebration, wonderful evening that night. And the, we got into a discussion about a contract with the folks that provide the display, so Mike, if you'll talk to counsel about that.
Thank you, Mayor. So J&amp;M reached out to us, and now that the city's responsible for shooting off fireworks, they've offered us a long-term contract with them where they basically extend to us a percentage and discount on our purchase. So that contract, if we enter into a three-year purchase contract, in other words, if we purchase fireworks, and I say "if" we purchase because we're not obligated to purchase under this contract, if we purchase fireworks, and we do so through J&amp;M, it'll extend to us a 15% discount. This contract was brought in front of Ways and Means. It was considered, and their recommendation to counsel was to approve it. I would also note out, or bring to your attention, there is a termination clause, so if we have our fireworks display within 30 days of that display, if we decide to cancel this agreement, we can give J&amp;M notice. We're not obligated to buy fireworks. It really is a pretty safe bet for the city and a way for us to get additional product or additional discounts.
And I think the one thing, too, the J&amp;M is where they've had a long-term relationship with Fairfield, but it was due to the J.C.'s earlier, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's, they've been involved with us for a long period of time, with the city.
Absolutely. I would also have one other item, Mayor. It's our understanding that there are no additional companies that purchase or sell fireworks in the state of Iowa. So if we're going to keep our business in Iowa, J&amp;M's sort of the only vendor that we're aware of at this time.
I just can't resist saying this, but it's a good way for us to get more bang for our buck. Oh, yeah, I just had to.
Put me in that one.
Mike, this is an extension, but where's the original contract?
So this is just a, the original contract was a one-term purchase agreement with them, and this is an extension of that original one-time purchase agreement.
I would move that we do it.
Okay, a motion by Anderson to approve the contract with J&amp;M displays.
Second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, we have two items regarding the beginning of our facade restoration project. Mel, if you'd come up and give us the plan for some of the space that's going to be needed in downtown to reserve for the contractors.
All right. So the facade project's going to be kicking off here pretty soon. We've got a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday with the contractor. Mike and I have already met with the contractor once to discuss some of their staging, some of their plans, but we'll go into a little bit more detail on Wednesday. So the contractor has discussed with Indian Cafe, who owns the empty lot between Indian Cafe and ERA Real Estate, and the contractors placed their job trailer there. We thought that would be a good place to keep it close to the square, yet off the square for when there are activities. So the first thing that the contractor's requesting is to close the alley between those two buildings, just the north part of the alley. So the east-west alley right out here, as you go from City Hall, that would remain open. This is mainly just to keep the traffic from going right past the job trailer. The contractor had talked with Indian Cafe, and they are okay with it, as well as Jim Horace, that they aren't going to be using that, those parking spaces for their business. So the property owners were okay with that. The next one, I'll just go ahead and explain, and you can separate them out in your motions, is the contractor, they'll be based out of, you know, their job trailer, they'll have some storage there, but most of the work is going to be happening in front of the buildings. Their plan is to kind of do a plug flow around the square, whereas they'll have the demo crews come in and start to take things off the building. And once the demo's done, the demo might move to another building on that block. And while another building is being demoed, they'll start on tuck pointing or whatever, painting, whatever might be the next step. They do, they are going to try and limit their work to one block at a time, but there may be different activities going on on different buildings. So the big use of space in front of the building is going to be during the demo period because everything will go into a dumpster. And that's where they would like to see, or like to request, temporarily blocking parking spaces in front of the buildings. And the contractor has said he thought that he wouldn't need more than four spaces at one time, and he's agreed not to close any of the handicap spaces during the temporary. So this would be maybe, he might have two in front of the Elks building and two in front of Central Park Furnishings. And then once he opens them in front of the Elks, he might move to Chiggy, closed to there. So those are the two requests on behalf of the contractor. Think that both of these are going to help with keeping the disruption of the square kind of to the buildings that are involved. I do want to point out again that the buildings are going to have, be accessible during construction. The scaffolding that will be put up will have a way for patrons to enter the buildings. So we're not expecting any major disruptions to the businesses. And if there is any major disruptions, that that's going to be coordinated with the property owners. The property owners are invited to the pre-con on Wednesday, so again, all those things are going to be worked out here in the next couple weeks.
Okay, thanks, Mel. And the closing of the alley is going to be for the duration of the project, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. So I thought it was very generous of Mr. Singh to allow for that because it won't be access to his business parking for quite some time.
So I just have one question about what has been reported here. Kid's Day Parade and Fair Fest, is it likely that they are going to have those closed parking spots out in September still?
Um, we, yes. Okay. They've been given a list of...
Activities?
Of activities, and their intent is to, I'll say kind of tighten things up, limit their disruption to the square, but yes, there will be activity going on during those. I mean, the scaffolding will still be up, for example, during those events.
Great. Okay, counsel, so we'll take the first request then, which would be the closing of the alley between 50 and 52 West Burlington and 50 West Burlington during, for the duration, and that would be the north-south alley, it would just be half of the north-south alley to Court. So entertain a motion to approve the closure.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Then also entertain a motion to, for the request for the temporary block of parking, maximum of four spaces on one block at any given time during the construction, and that to be supervised by our contractor and Mike and anyone else here that's looking after them while they're in town.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Revelinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you, Mel. Appreciate it. Next, counsel, we have consideration of a 28E agreement. This is on a spec building that is being planned on land owned by FIDA. So Adam, if you will bring us up to date on the plans for the building.
Sure. So, real quick background, I think most council members are familiar with the project concept, but there is a USDA program that will provide up to 50% funding through a 0% revolving loan fund program for shell buildings. So our intent is to apply through Access Energy for this program to fund half of it. And the shell building itself is anticipated to be about a 30,000-square-foot building in the new industrial park along 227th Street, just east of the DOT building. The other partners in this are the city, hopefully, the Board of Supervisors, who okayed the project this morning, FIDA, and Northeast Missouri Electric. So all of these partners would be responsible for one-fifth of this $400,000 loan if the situation arises that payments need to be made on it. And so that would be at the end of year two. Hopefully, we have the building sold or leased by the end of year two, and these payments are never needed to be made, but that's how the agreement's structured in case that situation doesn't arise. The actual ask initially from everybody is the $400,000 through Access Energy and the USDA, $78,000 from the Board of Supervisors, $78,000 from the city, and FIDA's anticipating filling the gap. We don't know the exact cost of the building yet. We won't know that until the governing board of this committee determines exactly what this building looks like until we've gotten bids to price it out. But again, 30,000 square foot is the anticipated square footage of it. It'll be located just east of the DOT. Access Energy is bringing three-phase power to the industrial park this year. We've got the former agreement that we had with the city and the county and the DOT to pave 227th Street, and we've got a sewer project that we just closed the bid on last week to bring the sewer to the place. So there's a lot of activity anticipated for 227th, as well as the sewer treatment plant, but this is going to be a great way to kick off the project. And so our formal ask to the council is that you allocate $78,000 from next year's budget. It may be two years out, but we're anticipating construction probably late fiscal year of next year or early the following year. And that would be in the form of a loan to FIDA at 0%, presumably returned upon the building being sold. Again, if the situation arises with the building sold at under-market value, under what everybody contributed, the losses would be shared, but the goal of this is to break even, create new economic development, bring new businesses to town, and see an expansion in the tax base.
Great, thanks, Adam. Mike, can you talk about where the city's funds would come from?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple items. So our $78,000 would be, or my recommendation would be, to come out of the UDAG fund, which we have approximately $96,000 of that fund currently. That is our funding source for the Fairfield Economic Development Association, who we contribute around $26,000 per annually. So as you can see, if we have not sold the shell building within a couple years, we're going to be looking at an alternative funding source for that particular line item. So I just want to make the council aware of that. We do have the funds available. However, we will deplete those funds when it comes time to pay FIDA in a couple years if the building hasn't sold. The other item I'd like to bring to your attention is on the second page. We, as the city, are agreeing to commit to waive the property tax consistent with Chapter 427 of the Iowa State Code. Chapter 427 of the Iowa State Code requires us to do that by ordinance. Currently, we do not have an ordinance in place to waive the property taxes for a spell or, excuse me, shell or a speculative building. So we can do so, I spoke to John about this earlier, and John, feel free to jump in. He's comfortable approving this agreement as it's written, knowing that we're sort of binding ourselves to pass an ordinance to allow for the property tax forgiveness on the spell check.
During the time that FIDA owns the building, not if it's sold.
That's correct. FIDA or another.
defeat our purpose. Or at least, yeah. At the point where it becomes occupied, it would presumably go into the tax base unless you chose to do a further abatement or attempt as part of the attraction.
Correct, right.
If you want to hear a little bit about what the process is going to be going forward, if you approve this, can have Josh kind of talk about the governing board and then kind of the plans going forward or vote on it later or at a different time.
I just want to pursue a little bit more about the UDAG. So is that fund still receiving money?
Yes. It receives approximately $12,000 annually.
And for how long is that going to continue?
2022.
Right, for the foreseeable future till 2022. As long as we continue to get from our debtor.
Right, yeah. Well, that was my only question, thank you.
So do we, the city and the contributors, own that portion of the property? Or what's our?
So you're making a loan to FIDA. FIDA will be the owner, the marketer of the building and the property with the agreement that we reimburse upon the sale.
Okay. Now, once the, if the building does not sell and it becomes a lease?
So we have the option of doing a lease. If the governing board, which is all the partners, decides to enter into a lease agreement, you could do a lease with agreement to purchase at some point after the USDA loan is paid back, that $400,000, and would start repaying back everybody else. But the priority is with the USDA loan because that's fixed timeline.
So the taxes would kick in then when somebody leases?
As soon as it's occupied.
As soon as it's occupied. And those would be paid by FIDA?
The property tax would be paid by the governing board of the 28E presumably, using the lease revenues.
Okay, so it'd have to be built into that.
Who would be the city's representative on the governing board?
I was so far.
Okay, all right. So someone from the council, someone from our committee.
Yeah, we went out and visited the site. We also talked about the agreement in a roundtable at the COLAB. And then it's been back and forth between the attorneys from each one of the groups. And Hi and Mike have had a chance to read through it and pick our little things out of it that needed to be corrected.
Okay. But this ongoing board would be making decisions on sale price.
The lease and the sale. Prior unanimous agreement along the board to make the sale in the supermajority to enter into a lease agreement.
Well, council, I think it's good when both the county and the city can participate in an economic development opportunity. I personally have felt that Fairfield's needed a nice, new, large enough spec building. I think you've got a great piece of land there near the highway. So I would recommend that we approve the.
I would personally move that we do approve at this time.
Moved by Rasmussen to approve the 28E, city's participation in 28E agreement.
Right, exactly.
Second.
Second by Thompson.
One last question?
Yes.
Is the goal to sell the building at market rate, potentially make a profit that's shared among the investors who try to sell it at the cost?
Realistically, we'd probably be looking at an at-cost transaction. The goal is not to make money off the building. The goal's kind of the benefits of having somebody occupying that building.
Okay.
Yeah, if we had multiple bidders and we could get a higher price than what we put into it, fantastic, but that probably won't happen.
And just given market rate, you're confident you could sell it at the cost?
No. I would not make that guarantee.
I'm not asking a guarantee, but we're moving forward with the hope that we will?
Yeah, there's instances where people have sold it at cost, and there's instances where people have sold it at a loss after several years.
Okay.
But again, you know, it'll be a marginal loss separated or divided up between multiple parties, all of which should see a benefit going forward, so.
There's a benefit besides just the sale of the building.
One of the issues is that we don't have a building of this size in the community right now that is for sale. If we did, you might be thinking twice about competing privately, but there isn't any private competition for that. And then the other thing too is that if you have someone who is interested in locating, they can do their own estimates on what they could build the building for. And then, so you're probably going to have to be close to what those costs are. And that's also part of what you're telling people that you're hoping to attract.
Well, I know a story, I believe it's Mount Pleasant, somewhere in the area. Did a spec building that didn't sell right away, but two manufacturers came to look at it, didn't use it, but ended up building in the area anyways. Sometimes it can actually be an attraction to get people interested.
Mount Pleasant's a pretty good example. They've done three shell buildings. The first one sold, I think, before it even was finished. The second one sat for maybe a year or two. And the third one sat, which was constructed right after the recession, for six or seven years. They just sold it on the last. And that one was, I believe, sold at a loss. But the first two shell buildings, they've since added on more than 150,000 square foot, the businesses that occupy it. And I think there's somewhere in the nature of 50 to 70 jobs created out of the three businesses that are there, along with property taxes. And so I would say that they're fairly successful even though the last one took a while to get rid of.
Thanks. And again, I mean, this goes back a ways. And it was, I don't know that the city, I don't remember if the city's involved, but FIDA, the first spec building that was built, it brought to town H&amp;H mold, traffic's devices, and then Fairfield Engineering were first in the building. And so, I mean, it's, you know, the idea of taking these businesses, helping them to expand, adding something, not that this is going to happen, that's the risky run. That's what we're trying to encourage.
Great. Thank you, Adam. So we have a motion and a second. Please call roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we'll move to the third and final reading of ordinance 1143, and that is our outdoor dining for downtown. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. Council, anything to report regarding the proposed ordinance?
Spoke to the owners of Shokai, who are renovating the space at the corner of Broadway and Main Street. They, again, expressed the same thing that the owners of Amora Mio Express, which is not interested in platform dining in a parking space. It doesn't make economic sense. They're only interested in sidewalk dining. It doesn't look like, so far, they're.
How recent was your conversations? I spoke to the Shokai guys on Saturday night and.
It's the same night I spoke to him.
Okay.
I spoke to his wife.
Early in the evening or?
No, it was funny because he wanted a full description of the platform and I don't know that he said he was going to do it.
I spoke to his wife, so maybe they're not in the same.
Well, anyway, I think the platform dining is part of what's being approved.
It is.
See if there's somebody who is brave enough to go ahead and then build something out there. Any other points, Michael?
That's it.
Okay. Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we have design guidelines for the outdoor dining. And I think we received these last meeting. We've got a chance to review them. Michael, can you roll over those for us, please?
Sure. So the ordinance, instead of the ordinance stating all the guidelines, we felt that that's, it's difficult to change in ordinance, takes three readings. So similar to other ordinances, like our tree ordinance mentions a tree plan that then can be updated more easily by council. This ordinance that we just passed references these guidelines. And these are best practices taken from other communities who have done this successfully. And it just talks about what materials are and are not accepted, the heights and setbacks and all those wonderful details. These are to maximize safety and convenience and attractiveness. So if you just kind of go through, you'll see a lot of pictures. For example, white plastic lawn chairs would not be acceptable for outdoor dining. So, you know, it's trying to go to a little higher-end type material, something a little classier, a little longer-lasting, more durable. Everything has to match within a dining space. You can't have an eclectic look. And I think it mentions for platforms, I don't know if it gives a lot of details on those, just in terms of materials. We weren't as specific, say, as Iowa City. I believe they have more limited type of materials that one could use. But again, the ordinance does require a permit. And so there's a review process. And the way the ordinance is worded is that the administrator or anyone he or she designates to review it can review it. So that can include beautification commission, the council, anybody he wants to bring into that process. So there's that extra filter in terms of if somebody tries to throw something together that maybe is inexpensive but just not up to standards, that would then not get permitted and then they wouldn't be able to do it. So just because it's in the ordinance, people can't start throwing things up. There's a permit process and these guidelines have to be met.
So who's going to approve? I mean, so they have to do the application and bring it back to the city hall.
Yes.
But then, once it is approved, who's going to sort of coordinate with the owner to see that it actually works out the way the plan is? I mean, you know, I just think that we need somebody so that it doesn't just get, you know. Because they're going to be upset if they do something and then we say that's not correct, even though that was what the plan said. I just think we need a person that is, or a committee or someone that is responsible.
Well, any permit and reference to code then does fall to our friend Scott Vaughn, who isn't here tonight, but you know how much he loves going around enforcing code. But Mike, what was the, you were about to say something?
No, you're absolutely correct, Councilmember Hallie. Scott Vaughn will be the representative from our agency that enforces this ordinance. He, Rebecca, has been working on a form that will sort of spell out the different guidelines and stipulations required to have an outdoor dining or an outdoor dining platform. And then, you know, the intent is that they submit a site plan early on before they buy any of their materials, so that we can approve the site plan. And then, once construction happens and when the material's in place, we'll follow up to make sure that they are true and accordance with our approved order.
That's all I was concerned is that, you know, I mean, I don't want them to go to the expense of something and then say, well, that didn't quite follow what we were expecting or the guidelines that have been established.
So we're going to ask for a site plan early first, approve it, and then they can.
Yep. Good planning before implementation. But similar to a sign ordinance, we have had instances where people have purchased signs, put them up, and then been told, oh, you wait, you didn't come to the city to get a permit or to make sure this matches our ordinance. So I'm going to talk to the chamber director and try to get the word out to all the downtown businesses who have this option to check with city hall before ordering anything. We did have one restaurant that kind of jumped the gun. The only thing they would need to do would be move their fence six inches closer to the building. Then they'll be in compliance with the ordinance. So not a big deal, but it is good to check with city hall before ordering expensive equipment or buying something that you can't.
Has the repairs been done on what's damaged out there on it?
I don't believe it has.
Or is it still just hanging there like it was and?
Not sure yet, yeah. But I mean, if it's got to be moved, then those bolts have to be taken up. But it might need to be reconsidered that that isn't. We do allow for fixed fences. And any damage onto the sidewalk is the property owner's expense, the property renter's expense to pay for. But yeah, it's got to be able to handle being leaned on, which it's going to get leaned on. And we did see that that didn't quite hold up over at a certain restaurant down the street, so. But again, this is all, I mean, it's a little bit of a learning process, but we've got the permit, we've got Scott looking at it, so I think we'll be okay.
Mike, can you tell us a little bit about the evolution of this, of these, all these guidelines? Like who worked on them? And some really good work, but I just wondered, how do we come up with this?
All right, there was a committee, it was Terry Baker, I believe, did a lot of the work on this. Adam Plaguey did a little bit of work, just kidding. Adam and I really worked on the ordinance part. We reviewed other towns' ordinances. We were kind of the ordinance guys. Terry Baker was mostly this. She took another community that did it right and used that as a template and then tweaked it to fit Fairfield. And then Bob Moore was also on that committee and just kind of gave a very practical viewpoint that rounded out the group. So there were four of us were the ones who put this together. But this was Terry Baker, 99%, so.
And my other question is, I mean, have, has there been any, you know, interaction with potential restaurants who are going to actually do this? Have they put input on it and had a chance to, you know, negotiate?
They came to our committee meetings when we were discussing this.
Yeah, two restaurants came to our committee meetings.
So their opportunity was there.
And we also.
This was under property committee that you did this?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
It was well-publicized. And we also worked with beautification commission to some extent on this. And, but yeah, I think that because it's, this has been done, we're not reinventing something, that we really found the best practices. And then we tweaked some things to fit our community based on like our sidewalk width and such. And, you know, like I said, I met with Amora Mio to explain because in the ordinance, we talk about a certain cross slope, where they couldn't quite translate that. So sometimes it's good just to show them. This brick portion doesn't count as part of your pathway, so you have to go four feet back. And then I saw they marked it with some blue tape. So I went out there with my tape measure, make sure they were where they should be, and they were. So once you explain it, it's pretty straightforward.
My, just the last point I wanted to say about it. Would it be a good idea to put in the guidelines a process for amending the guidelines?
Yeah, I think it's in the very end. This is subject to change by the city.
Subject to change.
Guidelines are subject to revision by the city of Fairfield.
Period.
Period.
Maybe that's all we need, but.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I personally, the platforms, and maybe we won't get anyone who is interested in a platform, but I'd love to come up with our own specs, set of specs for the platforms. I like to review what Iowa City has because they have a specific set of design guidelines.
They do.
I just think it would be wise for us to have that. I think it would keep it simpler and understand that, not so much the elements, Mike, but, you know, maybe even talking specifically about materials and different elements. You know, the ones in Iowa City all have that corrugated metal lip that connected to the sidewalk. Elements like that, that we can be assured that people are really taking care of that in the same way, in the best way. And again, doesn't need to go into the guidelines right now, but possibly something that can be continually researched and then come back with something more specifically.
And those are, that's an example of why we wanted to do this in the guideline rather than the ordinance, so that we could be tweaked and refined as we go. Because we're walking, this is new territory for the city of Fairfield.
Yeah. Good, so council, any other questions? Now we have a resolution to approve regulations, guidelines for outdoor dining design.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie to approve, second by Anderson. You know, the discussion. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign. Mike, you can tell us the next couple of steps we have on our sewer revenue control loan.
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a lot of language there to do something very simple. Basically, three to two years ago, the city borrowed several hundreds of thousands of dollars from IFA to complete the preliminary planning and design for our wastewater treatment facility and the conveyance work that was going along with that. Because we've entered into agreements with USDA, it slowed the process down and we're bumping up against the maturity dates for our P&amp;D loans from IFA. So simply what these three resolutions in front of you are for, on the $500,000 series, we're extending that maturity date until August 23rd of 2019. On the $1,075,000 loan, we're extending that maturity date until May 2, 2020. And on the third loan of $1,585,000, we're also extending that maturity date until May 2, 2020. These are no-interest loans, so there's no cost to the city to extend these in terms of interest cost. We're simply extending the charity dates to comply. And these resolutions amend our earlier ordinances or resolutions doing that.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mike regarding that? Of course, we'll just take these one at a time.
I did have one question. How are we coming on the USDA application for the plant itself? The environmental portion of that was submitted three weeks ago. It's in USDA's hands. Mel and I had a meeting with representatives, both the state engineer and the Mount Pleasant field rep. Their indication to us is that they are, they believe we'll be successful this federal fiscal year, and they hope to have an answer to us before September 30. So in the next two months, we should have an answer back from USDA on whether we are successful or not on the plant funding.
Thank you. So council, the first resolution then will be for the Series 2013, and that was dated August 23rd, 2013. That will be extended to August 2020. So a resolution to approve that amendment.
So moved to approve, second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign.
That wasn't the due date. That was the origination date, wasn't it, the 2013?
I'm sorry, 2017 was the, 16 was the due date. So we're going from 16 to 2020. Thank you. And then on the, on the next one, we're moving the due date from May 2017. Are we going from May, yeah, to May 2nd, 2020? And then on the, on the next one, we're moving the due date from May 2017, we're going from May, yeah, to May 2nd, 2020. Moved by Revolinsky to approve the amendment, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then the final resolution is to move the date from May 2nd, 2017 to May 2nd, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you, Mike. Counsel for the park and rec board of directors, I have one name this evening that would take one of the new positions on the board, and that is Terry Kness, who's agreed to serve on the park and rec board. Entertained a motion to approve Terry for that position. Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. We'll move to our committee and board reports. Ways and Means Committee, Tom.
The first item we had was the multi-year contract with G&amp;M, so that's been taken care of. Meeting Thursday, we did, Friday, we did talk about a sidewalk improvement request for the sidewalk in front of Timely Solutions. Not only does it need to be replaced, but there is old coal storage, right? That's underneath the street.
Coal bin.
Old coal storage. And so the, they have gotten some bids on that, they've gotten two. One was for, the loan was for about $11,400. And so the committee decided, the committee recommends that the council approve that. The funding for that would come out of the sidewalk fund that we have, and it would be a loan, we would be a loan. It would be repaid over, and that's to be negotiated yet. I don't know if we've had a chance to talk to them, but the initial money, roughly the 11,400, the contracts they have, would come from the sidewalk fund, but would be repaid over a period of time by the property owner.
Thank you, Tom. Mike, any other comments on that?
I did reach out to the property owner and left a message. I've yet to hear back from him. We have approximately $167,000 in that fund. We continually receive monies into those funds from previous assessments for the sidewalk program, so there is funds available to take care of the sidewalk.
And that will come up at a later time, right, whenever we do that. The last item we talked about, and it's not on the agenda tonight, is the Elks Club is part of the facade project. And their estimated cost to do their project was about $3,500 more than what they estimated. Part of it was due to some asbestos, I think, removal, if I remember correctly that. And we talked about various ways that we could offer some assistance to that, but at this point, they're going to the back, they need to get some clarifications on various options from their grand lodge. So at this point, it falls back in their quarters to what we might be able to assist with.
Okay, thanks, Tom. So on the sidewalk loan to the Slox, make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we let the council approve that.
Moved by Thompson, I'm sorry, Martha? Okay. Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion?
Yeah, now that'll be true repayment like the other people, but on the property taxes, it'll show up on their taxes over here.
Okay.
Yeah, extension of that same program that we used when we had the five mords, and now that we have this balance. And I'm glad that there are downtown property owners that could take advantage of this, so we can continue to upgrade those downtown sidewalks.
And that sidewalk, if you've seen it, really needs it.
It's the worst, yeah.
It's half gravel at this point.
Yeah. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee.
Yes, we met just before the meeting tonight, before the council meeting here tonight, and we considered two topics. First one was the water tower equipment agreement that we have with Listcall. This was entered into in the year 2000, and at that time, there was the, you know, compensation that the company agreed to give us was to have a service in one of our, a service at the water plant, internet service there. And we have found that since that time, the norm for compensation for such, for such cert, you know, use of public property for equipment is much higher than that. And so basically, our committee approved a letter that will be sent to them, which the requirement of the lease with them is that, the license agreement with them is that we would have, in order to change it, we'd have to consider terminating the agreement that we presently have. And so they need three years' notice before we can terminate the agreement. And so we're giving them three years' notice of termination, but we're hoping that we can enter into renegotiation sooner and perhaps just as, you know, being good partners in our community, they'll consider our request sooner than three years. But we want to see if there's a little more compensation the city can get for the use of water tower, the two water towers for their equipment. The other point that we discussed was a lease agreement with ITC, which is subsidiary reliant, which is responsible for power lines through the park right between Dogwood and Grand Park, that area, that little green space there in the community. They need to do some trimming of the power lines that go through there. They never had a formal easement with us, but actually they didn't show, and we don't have a copy of their agreement, so, their proposal, so we're going to consider that later. And that's it.
Thank you, John. Melanie, do you have anything in particular in your project update you'd like to point out to counsel?
Nothing really particular, other than that there is going to be a lot of construction going on the next couple of months. We had some close calls out on Fillmore and Liberty Drive between cars and the contractors, so I guess just remind everyone to be safe and slow down around all the construction that we've got going on, especially with the downtown facade, to be careful. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Melanie. Appreciate it. Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. One item, I want to sort of make an unofficial announcement. Melon and I had a very productive meeting with USDA this last Wednesday, and basically what they indicated is that we are very eligible for an additional $1.5 million of grant funds to construct the portion of step two that runs through the golf course. And they feel that we're very competitive because that particular part of the project is already designed, the environmental's complete, we just need to secure the easements required to complete that construction. So we're going to be working feverishly to try to secure those easements, and that could be very good news for the city if we're able to secure that additional $1.5 million of grant funds. It's approximately a $2 million project, so I would recommend that we use cash on hand in the wastewater department, and we can finish that leg of step two. So very good news in theory, let's keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best.
Great, thanks, Mike. So counsel, if you don't have any other business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Anderson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.